Okay, it is just about six o'clock on the dot on June 17th, 2025. This is the regular meeting of the Common Council of the City of Oneonta. We call that to order.
Mayor Drennan?
Here.
Councilmember Moser Kempole?
Here.
Councilmember Walsh Russo?
Here.
Councilmember McHugh? Councilmember LaFerry Schuh? Councilmember Carson?
Here.
Councilmember Harrington?
Here.
Councilmember Forster Rothberg? Councilmember Matheson?
Here.
All right, if you'd all please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its tenures, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in store. Thank you much. That seems to resonate more and more every council meeting. We have an opportunity in this moment to open the floor, and I'm happy to do that to council members that may have something they'd like to say and start off with us.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have actually three items that I just wanted to discuss. They're all quite independent of each other in terms of contact. The first concerns my ward and the increase in traffic, particularly on Galt Ave. And I've had, and it's of course due to the roundabout, DOT roundabout construction, and residents are concerned because Galt is very narrow, the increase in it's a one-way street, and the increase in traffic has been quite dramatic. A resident mentioned to me that at times the street is sometimes halfway filled with cars now. And so one thing I'd like to bring up for our next Quality of Life meeting is to talk about perhaps new signage for drivers, alerting them to the fact that Walling Ave is a perfectly okay way to turn if need be, and because it is wider and can accommodate more cars, would be more accessible. So I just wanted to bring that up as something perhaps for Councilmember Harrington on this coming Monday, if we could perhaps address as a topic, just the kind of increase in traffic overall on narrow streets has been brought up to me. The next item I just wanted to mention was regarding the community solar sign-up that we, as a city, recently became part of with a company called Solar Simplify. And I just wanted, there's been questions sent to me and to other, I think, city officials regarding this campaign. And so I just wanted to provide some responses to those questions. And so this is just further information that kind of maybe fills out the details around this campaign. So the first is that the community solar campaign is for city residents only, and that does not include town residents despite the fact that there were mailings sent to some town residents. That was an error on the part of Solar Simplify. So this is a campaign only for city residents that can benefit city residents only. That said, you, as a city resident, have to choose between either the county's solar campaign or Solar Simplify or the city's campaign. You're not eligible to participate in vote. You have to choose either one or the other campaign. The amount reduced from your initial bill, from your bill overall, will be 10%. The county's campaign is 5%. So I just wanted to clarify that.
So it's 10% of credits, correct, solar credits?
It's a reduction in, it's a 10% reduction in your overall bill that you will be given. So it is, it is a reduction. That's the whole purpose, is that it reduces your, did you have a question about that?
Yeah, I've actually been reaching out to the common
Solar Simplify. I have the letter here if you want me to
Yeah, actually, if you don't mind.
Provide for it. So, okay. So my last point that I wanted to raise is that it is not possible to participate in a campaign if you have solar panels on your house already. So you're not eligible to participate in the community solar campaign, Solar Simplify. So I just wanted to kind of clarify all those points. I'm actually going to circle back to the point about the savings, because I'd like to just go on, and I can, at some point, if somebody else has comments, I'm just going to look up that, that point. But I'd like to go to my last item that I'd like to bring up to council and to the broader public. It is something that touches us locally but has made national news, and that is the devastating murders of the Minnesota lawmakers this past weekend, and how their murders point to, or at least murder, the one political figure and her husband, point to the growing political violence against elected officials on both the national, state, and local level. And so I just wanted to raise to both the broader public and to the council's attention that Princeton University has a research project called Bridging Divides, which is a project that has looked at and is an ongoing longitudinal study, which means it will be, you know, lengthy study, looking at the effects of political violence and the threats of violence impacting local officials throughout the United States at the national level. Survey and qualitative studies of interviewing political officials around the perception of threats and the actual threats that officials are experiencing. So according to their preliminary data, violence targeting local officials in terms of threats has increased 74% since 2022. So it's been, it's just a huge increase in terms of the perception and then the actual threat of violence targeting local officials that I think we want to be aware of. And I wanted to just point out that the authors write that the need, there's a need for a whole kind of systems thinking here to push back against the normalization of these threats, and that many officials, particularly, they point out, those in small communities or from underrepresented backgrounds, will continue to face high risks without adequate support. So one of the dimensions of this that local officials nationally are looking at, whether or not the public availability of public officials' addresses should continue. And so it's something that I would like to propose to the council in terms of an ongoing conversation around whether or not we want to provide our home addresses on the city website, and whether or not the availability of our home addresses is something that we should consider reversing. So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention.
Depending on the length of this meeting, we may have time to bring that up in discussion a little bit later on, see if we can get some sort of consensus if that's all right. Unless we're looking at 10 o'clock, we might have a different conversation. I want to just, on the, thank you very much. I want to just read you what I have here from the vice president of sales and marketing on that subject of
Yeah. I also have the letter here, and it says guaranteed 10% discount on mostly solar credits. Okay. So income-qualified are eligible for enhanced savings of 20%. That, that is a reduction in your bill.
Oh, without a doubt.
Yes, okay. So that's what I want to clarify.
Absolutely. And just to be, just to be clear, I'll just add this little extra that she's provided me, which is the 10% discount clarification program provides a guaranteed 10% discount on the value of solar credits, not on the total electric bill. For example, if subscriber receives $100 in solar credits, their discount is 10% of that amount, so they receive a $10 net savings for that month. Well, phrase 10% discount on solar credits is accurate in compliance. You're right, we recognize it may be unfamiliar to some, however, we've facilitated numerous municipal campaigns across the state, and we are here with customer support. So anybody's got any questions? So it's, it's, it takes a little bit to kind of really understand what it is, but
It's a, it's a learning
It's a discount.
Certainly. I'll just mention, I actually participated in something like this about five to 10 years ago, and it added up to be, you know, a reduction in my overall bill. So I did see the difference.
Sure.
So just to kind of point that out. And so, yeah, so, so the idea of solar credits is a little bit of a, you know, category that we're maybe less familiar with.
Right. That's right. Okay. Do we have anybody else among council who'd like to bring something forward before we move on with the meeting? Katie?
Well, I do have something. Mike has something first.
Mike has. What do you guys?
Um, I'm not, I didn't, I didn't prepare a thought around it other than what we were talking about.
Shall we go to the mic then?
Yeah.
Please.
Okay.
Sorry.
I just, I want to give council an update on the Oneonta resident, the Watkins Avenue resident, who was arrested by ICE on Saturday. The latest information we have is that he's been relocated now to Otavia, to the Buffalo ICE facility. At this point, his family's still not been able to talk to him or have any communications with him. He had his cell phone apparently on the ride to Albany where he was first seen to an ICE facility north of Albany, and took a few pictures out the window, and with his mouth showed where he was, and that was, so either he no longer has his phone, we don't know. He no longer has his phone, or his phone died and he can't recharge it. But the bad thing, however, is that this man, who was an illegal asylum seeker, Venezuelan man who's been living in Oneonta for six months, came here with his family, just walking out to his car on his way to work, was taken off the street and taken away. And I watched the video of his arrest. He was actually surprisingly calm as he was being arrested, but it's just, it's appalling to me that this can happen in our community. And I think, what I've been thinking about this week, is just the fact that we continue to see changes happening in the federal government and conflicts between the federal government and federal, federal law and New York state law. And so we have to think, you know, as lawmakers for the City of Oneonta, have to think hard about when there are conflicts, going, no, it's, it becomes a difficult legal question for us to think about. So I've prepared, I've been working on a resolution, it's not finished yet, partly because I need to consult again with David Merzick about sort of legal reform ramifications of some of these things. But I just want to read you the first, perhaps generic paragraph, but important. Whereas the City of Oneonta is a welcoming, inclusive community that values the dignity, the safety, and civil rights of all individuals, regardless of race, nationality, immigration status, among others. So, I mean, that's a very baseline thing, but I feel like it's our responsibility as leaders of this community to do all we can. And some of the, the things that, you guys will see this resolution probably in a week or so, one sec, we hammer it out, but some of the things are encouraging community members to volunteer to help their, you know, immigrant and other new, new people who've moved to Oneonta, to improve information on the city website, so that it's easy, there's a sort of one spot place for people who are basing these issues can come to, to find out the specifics about Oneonta. There are some things to, about how the police will work with ICE that I need to talk to the police chief about to hammer out what we can and can't do. And I would welcome all of your input as I'm working on this for actually, of other things that you think are important to include in this. I feel like we saw, you know, two weeks ago with discussion about defunding of child core, and last weekend with ICE, and last month with, with people losing Medicaid coverage, that time and time again, as the federal government is changing its policies, the people who are suffering are those who are often the poorest or oldest, often minorities, and those people are part of our community, and we've got to do everything we can as, you know, as able-bodied people who are educated and have jobs and so on, that we need to use our resources to support everybody in our community. So I'll get out my soapbox now, just to say, please give me feedback and input after you, if you'll see a draft, give me any input at that point.
Katie, you have something?
I did. So I wanted to bring up, now that you're here with us, something that I had brought up two weeks ago when we met, which is, I'm just like, I'm off book here and I don't really write anything, but the, the general idea that I brought was that enhancing communication between the mayor and the mayor's liaison to the general workings of the city and the city council. And so I know that you have been very willing throughout your term to meet one-on-one, we're in small groups with council members, and that's about, my suggestion is about institutionalizing some form of regular communication between the mayor's office and thereby the city administrator, and, you know, the staff and what's going on in, within the city and the council. So my suggestion was that there be like a weekly, at least, sort of update of, because I know that you in particular have worked on building a relationship with the city administrator, where you to meet regularly, at least weekly. And so I know that you are kept abreast of things pretty, in a pretty current manner. And this would be about sharing that information broadly with the council at that time, so that we are as in the loop as you are with regard to what to expect, what's going on, what challenges are. And then the other thing was, I know that this has been brought up for like years now, because I remember the former third board council member taking some issue with it at one point, which is that we often don't know, like, if, like, you're going on a vacation or something, and you should contact the acting mayor, or, you know, things of that nature. And so I was thinking about that more broadly, that I think it would be helpful if we knew sort of what you're, like, what you're working on, and where, you know, like, if you do go out of town, can we, can we expect to contact the acting mayor, or, you know, I think that'd be helpful in, like, emergency situations as well. So just more transparency about, you know, kind of what you're working on and where, where you are and stuff like that. And I felt that it would be easiest to do just like a calendar that is shared with us, but certainly I don't want to have it feel like, I mean, don't tell us about your doctor's appointments, do you know what I mean? But just like if you had a call with Josh Riley, for example, you know, knowing that that was coming up, we might be able to think about ways that we could communicate with, like, our state legislator, state legislators as like one body. So anyway, so those are sort of two separate things, and maybe that's taken, maybe that's addressed by the sort of weekly update thing, because you could be like, oh, next week I'm going to call Josh Riley or whatever, and that would be helpful, just to know, so that we are really able to successfully, more successfully distribute knowledge, but also, I think, just utilize our relationship to each other, which is that, you know, you do this sort of more regularly than we do, and so I think anything that helps facilitate the operation of our, of our body, of our board, and then also in terms of getting information out to us, like, then we are more knowledgeable to be able to help our constituents. So we had a conversation about it last week, but you weren't here, so I wanted to bring it back up for consideration as, obviously to loop you in, but to, you know, have you be able to give sort of your, the way you see it practically going. And really, this is about, for me, establishing the role of the mayor as liaison to council to better distribute information. And I think that it's a good time because we will have a new mayor in January, and so if we can get something working with someone who has been doing the job, we have sort of an institutional framework to move forward. So that's my spiel, and I'd like to know your thoughts.
Well, quickly, so I've been at this for 42 months, and you're right, I've met with every council member that's wanted to meet, agendas, the people typically spend an hour and a half with me, thank me for the, for the time, although I'm always glad to spend that time. I've actually kept those agendas, I have a folder this thick of every meeting I've ever had with a council member. But I get your points, I hear your points. I'm also concerned about making certain that my successor has the full width and capacity of the job as he or she sees it in the context of the, of the charter. So what I'll do, what I can promise I'll do, is have conversation via correspondence with, with the council about what, how I look at that, what I think is a strategy, certainly a strategy for me, not necessarily something that I feel comfortable in. I don't want to create a box for the, my successor. I want to be able to give that person, whomever that might be, the full, you know, resources of the office. But I'll have that conversation with the council. You guys who've worked with me long enough to know that if there's something that I need to do a course correction on, I typically do.
Well, I don't think it's a course correction. I think, for me, it's about efficiency, right? I don't have time personally to meet with you for an hour and a half at a, at a regular clip, but considering you are here and you meet the city administrator, it seems like just disseminating that information would be a pretty practical way for us to improve communications. So, I mean, I don't see it as a box, and I think it would, I think, you know, we had a full day seminar about improving communications, and we've been striving to do that in dribs and drabs for a year or so. So I don't, I think, I don't know, I, I think that it is worth consideration, and I hope that you will, and I don't see it as boxing someone in, but as like, we all have regular expectations of each other.
Sure.
So I'm happy to share your expectations of the new mayor as well, but I think if we can get it going and prove that it works, then that's more likely to be successful.
Well, I, I've just committed to having correspondences with the council and see if we can determine something that either if it's, if it needs to be fixed, what that fix looks like, if it does need to be fixed, and we'll all agree on that as well. So I'm happy to have that conversation, and I will, via correspondence of the Chris next couple of weeks, if that works.
Like via email?
Yes.
And not now?
No, not now.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate it as an option, but I would love actually to, to move on to other council members' items for discussion, if there are any.
I would just say, it would be useful discussion, and if our meeting doesn't, if we can be efficient today, maybe we can talk about a little bit.
Well, I, I'll tell you, I'm not inclined to, to, to have a conversation around it. I know that I'm not prepared to have that conversation, so I don't think I do myself or this council or our folks in the gallery service by having a conversation I'm not real prepared to, to undertake.
Fair enough.
But I will correspond with the council, and we, this, and we will move forward with it. Okay, does anybody else have anything? Yes, Lon.
So I guess, starting off with Cecily, you mentioned Galt Avenue, and then we received email last week from concerned citizens on, I believe it was Pine Street, and, and then we all saw the response that Chris Yakabuchi received from the state DOT. Given that this is a state project and you're overseeing the entire project, do you think maybe the better avenue is to work with Chris Yakabuchi in communicating with a, with a state DOT?
I, I think the more, and I actually loathe to use this word, but I think the more efficient process here should be to have a discussion of quality of life about this and proceed from there.
Okay.
I wanted to raise, and you all should have a black and white copy, Juneteenth Festival is this Saturday, starting at 1:00 and ending at 6:00 in Nebula Park. Ms. Shannon wanted me to bring this up, so I will. So there is a free meal for the entire community. You can play basketball and jump rope, and there's crafts, and there will be local artists and free performances. And hopefully each one of us will take a few minutes and zip on down there.
Is there anybody else that has anything else for the general public at this moment? If not, then we'll move on to the agenda. All good? All right. So we have our petitioners and our public hearings and correspondence, and in this particular instance, we have a public hearing, which is to receive comments on the City of Oneonta's community development needs and the possible submission of one or more community development block grants, applications for the 2025 program year for housing, economic development, micro enterprise, public facilities, public infrastructure, and planning activities with the principal purpose of benefiting low and moderate income persons. Do we have anybody among us who would like to speak on that? Okay, seeing no hands, we're going to close that public hearing, and we'll move on to our petitioner section, and we're all so familiar with this at this point, but I'll repeat it anyway. If you have anything that you'd like to say, let's keep it to three minutes if you could, use the podium if you would, they'll monkey a microphone over to you, I guarantee it, right? And identify yourself and where you live, and if anybody would like to speak, this is a time to do that. Have we anybody, we may not be needing to do that. Do we have any petitions?
Anyone?
Have we? Yes, there you go. It turned out perfectly good, like, turn.
Don, I'm grateful you sit over there and not me, because I'm not happy to try to figure that out. Move that heavy podium as well.
Okay, you're all set. Nice, nice. So again, your, your name and where you
My name's Andrew Mason. I'm co-president of the Delaware Auto Ego Audemars Society. I, I am a city resident, I live in the sixth ward, and I, my purpose here tonight was to speak on the changes to the city code regarding firearms use in the city, and proposed changes to require non-lead ammunition. I see it's not on the agenda tonight, so I won't really take time here. But I will take time to thank the environmental board and the Parks and Rec Commission, and the members of the common council who, who have been supportive of this. So I'm not sure what the, what the timeline here is for that to come back before the council, but I'll plan on commenting then. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'm going to guess, seeing no movement, that you could take the microphone back. Thank you, guys. Do we have any correspondence?
You have one. It's from Jessica Halsted of 23 Pine Street. My name is Jessica Halsted. I am a resident of Oneonta in the third ward on Pine Street. I was hoping to make it to this evening common council meeting, but I am unable to do due to family obligations. I am hoping you would please read or hand out copies to each of the council people there. The update below is from me. The roundabout construction, as you all know, has some of us going a bit insane with traffic flow changes, as should be expected. I want to thank Mike from Ward 7 for replying to my email from last week and putting me into contact with Chris with DPW. Chris, over the weekend, touched base with me and the state to work on a solution. I was extremely impressed to hear from the state that new signage would be in place by end of business Monday, parentheses, yesterday, and that hopefully that would alleviate the problem and concern of the letter. This is an update to let you know that it has not. I came home from work to find no new signs on Pine Street itself. The only new sign that was even in place was at the intersection of Maple Street and Potter Ave, and it states "no through traffic," except it's up high and hidden a bit until you turn onto Potter. Another 10 cars went up the wrong way all the way to Center Street last night, and those are just the ones I've counted. This isn't keeping anyone from 20-plus on Pine Street safe. So here are my reasonable suggestions. One, place another sign stating "road closed, local traffic only," or "no outlet" at the intersection of Pine and Potter right in the road, but off to the side, leaving room for one car to enter, like the sign is at the top of the street. Two, place detour signs pointing towards Potter Ave that can be read far enough in advance from both directions. Three, replace the "no through traffic" at the intersection of Maple and Potter where they do not enter wrong way, making it temporarily a one-way street flow east to west from Pine Street to Maple. This shouldn't inconvenience Potter residents too much, as they too have to go to Maple Street for an outlet. Lower Pine Street residents will still be able to access their end and be able to travel back up to Potter Ave to get off the street. There is no need to have traffic flow all the way up Pine Street, north to Center Street, past Potter Ave. With Pine normally being a one-way headed south and allowing parking on the street, there is not enough room to have cars going the wrong way. And most cars going the wrong way are speeding up the street because they don't have clear signs telling them which direction to go. These suggestions will benefit all residents of the street and keep all of the residents safe. In my previous emails to the council members, I attached pictures, and they can be referenced to those pictures. I appreciate everyone's time and concern for the safety of city residents and the many tourists we have this time of year. Sincerely, Jessica Halsted. Chris Yakabuchi was unable to be in attendance tonight, but he was sent a copy of this email, and he states that he will be reaching out to the New York State Department of Transportation and provide an update.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you very much. All right, so we'll move on now to our committee reports, starting with the legislative committee. And Len, if you would.
Thank you, Mayor. We met June ninth and before you, a few pieces of ordinance that we worked on included the discharge of firearms. We talked about non-led bullets for hunting purposes, the ethics board, the tree board, which that part is tabled until July because our DPS superintendent hadn't had an opportunity to see the document from the environmental board. And we also talked about fireworks. So, Carrie had sent out that along with, I think there was five pieces of legislation that was sent out. I'll try and answer any of the questions that people may or may not have on those.
Let's open the floor to questions.
So, the change for the firearms is July first, right? It's tabled till July, or on our desk, late July first, how we vote on it, July first. Correct.
And you heard, you heard, understood what you said here?
Did you say fireworks or firearms?
Firearms. Oh, yes. Scott was just talking about firearms.
Oh, and what was the July first reference?
That the law would be laid to rest, correct?
To be voted on. So, it was laid today electronically to the council members. It has to age on their desk before they can vote on it. So, they'll be voting on it July first.
So, that's the next meeting?
Yes.
That's great.
Okay, thank you.
It's taken me a while to figure it out and I still don't have it. Any other questions for Len?
Yeah, I was curious if the legislative committee is going to be taking up reviewing the nomination process still and where that was at? Like nomination for council members? Because I know that had been on the legislative committee agenda. It came up last year around my nomination. I know that. I clearly remember this. And in hopes that nobody has to go through the same kind of process that Michael and I did, you know, I just want to know if that was still being considered.
We haven't spoken about it for a while.
A long time.
I guess we could bring it back up.
Yeah, we probably have to dig through notes to figure out where we left it. I'm sure we felt complete on it and moved on, but I don't know what the resolution was.
On behalf of my successor, I'd be thankful if you did do that. So, kind of.
Thank you.
Anything else for Len and legislative? All right, well, thank you very much, Len. And move on to community wellness committee, which was chaired now, is chaired now by Elaine. And Elaine, would you let us know what happened?
Yeah, so that was the first community wellness meeting that I chaired along with our, well, Shannon has joined a couple of meetings ago and Don joined us at this meeting. We had a guest from Fordue, the Friends of Recovery, dedicated to others. Thank you. I had a moment where I was thinking the old one. So, Tim France joined us and told us about their full spectrum recovery services. We asked what they, you know, if he had a wish, what the wish would be, you know, that the city could help with. And he said that he wishes, you know, that there were sober living programs in our community. So, that's one thing. As we talked more, he also identified the connective, the need to connect with public transportation. And it reminded us that at one point we had talked about some kind of bus pass program or giving out vouchers. So, we'd like to revisit that idea and come back to wherever we were at with that. And for most of the meeting, we reviewed the committee's purposes and goals with the new members present to make sure that we can address any concerns about redundancy, you know, between the work that that committee was doing and other committees. And so, we're going to look to focus on items that we feel like we can make the most impact, things like we've been working at, well, Katie really has been working on the tobacco licensing legislation, but we're going to bring that back. And Jennifer Hill is active from the tobacco-free committee is going to be joining us at the next meeting. And we're also going to continue to research cooling centers and identify places in the city that we could use as cooling centers for our residents.
Great. Any questions for Elaine? Yes, Don?
Elena, if you could explain about the bus passes a little bit more because you just said like vouchers or bus passes.
Yeah, so the idea-
The reason behind why we were talking about it.
Right, yeah. The idea there was helping the connectivity, you know, for folks who need to get to places, maybe like to up to the DSS in different places. A lot of the folks that the Fordue and our other service agencies in the area work with have a need to use public transportation. They may not have the funds or ability to access that transportation. So, we were talking about ways that it would be possible to help folks access the bus and, you know, ways and possibly through a bus voucher or passes that can be given to these agencies to give as needed. So, it's an idea we would love to explore.
I think DSS provides bus passes to their clients.
Catholic charities.
Oh, Catholic charities.
Catholic charities. All kinds of bus passes. They purchase from us. And so does DSS. I think if the DSS, DSS will give a pass to that in the next return.
Glad to have you here. So, a question?
Yes, so, okay.
I didn't hear what you said. If you could speak up.
Catholic charities has passes for people and so does DSS. They can reach out to both of them.
Yes, all right. Excellent. Thank you.
Any further questions for Elaine? All right, well, thank you very much, Elaine. We'll move now to Cecilia and the finance and human resources committee report.
Thank you. So, we had a series of discussions around the license agreement for Chestnut for the sidewalk use and we reviewed the drug and alcohol testing for the OPT. We decided to pull for discussion two items. One was the rooftop concert that was a request from last year and this is the second request now for this coming August. And then the second item that we pulled for discussion was a grant application for the U.S. Department of Transportation Safe Streets and Roads for All. And so, we'll have discussions about those two items.
Any questions? Well, thank you very much, Cecilia. And now we will move on to our agenda with the approval of warrants. Motion that the common council approves the warrants totaling $297,946.99 and that the same be placed on the finance director's desk for payment as presented. Do I have a motion to approve? I've got Elaine followed by Don.
Councilmember Mojer Kempoli?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh Russo?
Aye.
Councilmember Lapari Shu?
Aye.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Forster Rothberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheson?
Yes.
All right, that takes us to the consent agenda. I just want to pull out the name Susan Lettis, just rejoining the planning commission. Just again, our thanks to Susan. She continues to step up as so many folks, but in this particular case, here's her name. So, I want to thank her personally for doing that. We are, the consent agenda, our items two through seven, and if I could have a motion to approve. I've got very quiet people over here. I've got Mike followed by Don and we'll take the vote, please.
Councilmember Mojer Kempoli?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh Russo?
Aye.
Councilmember Lapari Shu?
Aye.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Forster Rothberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheson?
Yes.
All right. Which brings us to our acting city administrators report. So, he's going to act like he has all the answers. So, any questions that you have?
If you have any questions, I'll forward.
Does everybody have any questions for Dave? I think you're off the hook. So, we thank you very much. And thank you very much for stepping in this week as you have. All right, my remarks couldn't be shorter. I just am so proud of this community. I just really am very proud of this community. Pride Fest, bringing a tear to my eye right now, the No Kings Rally. God bless you all. Move on to our discussion agenda. Motion number eight, that the common council approves the event and street closure application by MOPAR CAMs in partnership with the Autumn Cafe for the Beatles rooftop concert event to be held on South Main Street on August 30th, 2025 and waives the $100 application fee. The common council further authorizes the city administrator to make any necessary permit modifications based on future planning meetings with the city staff and the applicant. Do I have a motion to approve? I've got Elaine, I've got, I'm going to say Scott. And discussion of this? Yes.
So, we were just, in our discussion, we were curious, the event was held last year, the barricades last year, yeah, there was a whole, right?
There was a thing.
And so, the question was, was the money then returned? Because we requested 100, the $100 fee, the money was not returned.
I verified and Ginny double-checked my verification.
Okay. So, in light of that information then, the request was to have the fee waived because last year the fee was still collected despite the fact that the barricades went out of the building. So, that maybe contextualizes a little bit this request a little bit?
Yeah, I mean, they did wind up with the street closed. I'm here to say, right? Younger than I look. But, but anyway, we had the street closed for sure. But the other piece there, I think that was part of their argument, was the fact that this is free, this is absolutely free and the folks on South Main Street invariably, a large percentage of them wind up, you know, repopulating downtown's shops and restaurants right afterward. It's really kind of an economic boon. They aren't charging for it, they're not being paid for it, you know, themselves as musicians. It's kind of a gift to the community and the business community. So, I would say if Mark Pauquette was here, that's what, he'd be happy that I'm saying that. So, there's that. And then there's, of course, again, the fact that there was that snafu with the barricades. So, yes, Don?
Yeah, as you know, I was there and you kind of saved the day because the street was supposed to be locked off on both ends and it didn't get done and Mark went and got the barricades and about halfway through the concert, put them up and he deserves kudos for that. Good that you did.
I appreciate that, but I've already gotten my kudos long ago, so I don't want to waste any kudos. So, any other conversation, discussion of this?
So, is there a cost to the city? I mean, we have staff that's going to have to-
It would be DPW taking the barricades out and then bringing them back in.
Right. So, that's a cost beyond this application fee or?
No, I think it's probably what's included in-
No, that's typically why the $100 is.
To cover that cost.
So, will this set a precedence for other events that people want in the downtown area if we waive this?
Everything potentially sets a precedent unless we say it doesn't.
I look at it as like a refund because we didn't give them the money back. We kind of dropped the ball on something, so instead of like giving the money back and they're giving it back to us this year, it's just one end, we just washed it out. That's the way I look at it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's really, I think, what it is.
All right. So, it sounds like we may have reached the end of discussion. Shall we take a vote?
Councilmember Mojer Kempoli?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh Russo?
Aye.
Councilmember Lapari Shu?
Aye.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Forster Rothberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheson?
Yes.
All right. Last item on our discussion agenda is motion number nine, the common council authorizes the submission of a grant application to the U.S. Department of Transportation Safe Streets and Roads for All, which is SS4A program, for a project with a total cost of up to $375,000 with up to 80% grant or $300,000 of total eligible SS4A project costs to fund a planning and demonstration grant for the completion of a comprehensive safety action plan that may include supplemental safety planning and demonstration activities for the city of Oneonta and further authorizes the city administrator to sign documents and agreements necessary to execute a grant agreement and complete the project, subject to review by the city attorney. The common council further authorizes a local match of 20% of total eligible SS4A project costs not to exceed $75,000 to be funded from the street and sidewalk reserve and authorizes any necessary budget amendments and transfers. Do I have a motion to approve? I've got Elaine, I've got Don and discussion.
So, this is 375 for a consultant to come in to work with the city staff to talk about safe sidewalks and streets?
To do a comprehensive safety action plan for the whole city, which would include that, I guess.
So, that would include speed limits?
It would include anything we would want to include relative to the safe streets.
I mean, we've had a lot of discussion about speeds on certain streets throughout the city, so would this study include that?
I think it could. We'd have to define what's included if we get funding, but it could, I'm sorry. It could include that, it's going to be for pedestrian safety, bike safety and street safety.
So, will that include the conditions of our sidewalks? Because I'm sure all of us have handled a lot of questions.
The conditions of our sidewalks?
Right.
That I don't know if it gets down to that level of detail.
Can I ask about, oh, sorry, you had to-
Yeah, I was just going to say that I know that we've had several discussions on quality of life and infrastructure about, first of all, about bike lanes and then about the wider, you know, picture of how bike lanes fit in with the infrastructure. And I know that that was part of the discussion along with this because we, like I said, I think we've discussed it at the past four meetings at least about the desire for bike lanes, the best way to implement bike lanes. So, I know that's at least one piece of it here.
My question was sort of a follow-up to that and Len's question, which is about, I know you guys have talked about equality of life and we've had visitors from my ward inquiring about stop signs. And I know we're not the only ward that has concerns about speeding on certain areas and where stop signs maybe could or should be. Is that something duty that could be written into the grant? It's like a-
I think once-
Like an analysis of our-
If we get funding, we'll be defining the scope. We don't have to define the scope now.
Okay.
So, that will be part of, that'll be like the first steps of what is going to look at.
Okay. And what does, I'm sorry to cut you off, what does that process look like defining the scope? I mean, is that something that happens internally or do we give input to that? Because the scope could be, could not involve those things when we get to that point and that would be, I think, a shame if that's something that we would like to have addressed.
I'll talk to Gary when he gets back and make sure that he includes that in there in the council. It's a, the narrative that we submit is two pages long. We do not have to go into any detail whatsoever about what we're doing. Other than, we do have to say if we want to include funding in here for the supplemental safety planning and demonstration activities, we have to give them an idea of what we're going to do. So, one of those, the supplemental safety plan, we'll be taking on a closer look at, like the overall plan is very simple, but we can target, we can drill down and one of the things we're going to look at is doing more comprehensive study on Route seven and Chestnut Street corridor. And then for demonstration projects, we've already talked, and we're going to talk more when Greg gets back, this is due on the 26th. But one of the demonstration projects that we've already talked about is figuring out, doing some smaller demonstration projects to figure out which types of bike lanes would work best in certain areas of the city where right now it's difficult to get them in. So, that much I know, but actual details will be determined after we give the, if we get the grant, which we have a pretty good chance of getting.
So, if, I just wanted to ask if I'm understanding you correctly that this plan that would be defined by the grant would be pretty simple and then we would have to do more comprehensive planning afterward? So, I misunderstood.
No, the application is simple.
Okay, got it.
They only want two to three pages of a narrative on the application, which is very, very basic application. So, the definition of everything that we're going to do in the plan- So the, the definition of everything that we're gonna do in the plan will come as we begin the plan and...
And then, sorry, can I complete my question?
Yes.
So, because my question hasn't been answered. So, and then, one of the reasons why we haven't been able to address the stop sign on Spruce Street, Spruce Street issue and various other places is because they require independent studies of like tens of thousands of dollars. Would this plan be sufficient to then begin to implement some traffic control as long as it was recommended by the plan? Or would we still need, would we still have to go beyond that and have individual traffic studies and things like that?
I don't know for sure. I, I would assume, yes, that the planning part that would be in this, the implementation, this gets us closer to being able to apply for implementation funding in the future.
Okay.
Actually implement things like bike lanes that cost this money. But I would assume that we're gonna be looking at our problems in our transportation system here in the city.
Okay.
In our streets, and which that would be one.
Okay.
Honestly, until Greg is back, I don't have any detail on it.
Okay, that's a shame, but I appreciate you trying to answer.
Mike can answer, Cecilia.
Two questions, Judy, hopefully you can answer. Can you talk a little bit more about the, sort of the global look, like, we, if we receive this, you said it'll make it easier to receive actual funding. I'm concerned about the possibility of the pattern that I've seen before of us getting grants to do studies, but then never getting implementation funds. So how, what happens?
I, I have to challenge that. We don't have that pattern. We have gotten...
We shouldn't say never.
A number of times, but in this case, this is the last year of this particular round, so or maybe there's one more year to it, but we can apply for either demonstration and planning grant or an implementation grant. In order to apply for an implementation grant, you have to have the plan, the action plan. Or you have to have one in your region. We don't have one in our region, so we're doing it. I don't know, and DOT, on a, US DOT, on their webinars, I've watched two so far, they have such a smooth, I have to say. But I watched both of them, and they can't say if there'll be more funding runs in the future over implementation. But they're hopeful, and if there are not, there may be other, other funding sources at the state level as well. The federal level, obviously, is very up in the air right now with funding. But in order to have the chance at all to go after any of the other funding, we would have to have this in place. That's why we're doing it.
Do you have a follow-up?
One of these is...
Yeah. My follow-up is how this sort of folds into other planning that we're doing, like comprehensive plans especially. Like, would this, would the stuff from this study be able to get integrated into the comprehensive plan? Is that the thing?
They'll probably be done on, well, this one might lag a little bit behind the comp plan because that's gonna be starting very soon. But yes, simply answer yes. All of our planning will be tied together. The comp has a plan, the BOA, they're gonna be going together. We're finishing up the LWRP, so any of these, and we have a complete streets policy in place, so they all tie together.
Cecilia?
I, I don't have much to add substantively in terms of the details because Judy is the expert here, but I wanted to just mention, just to kind of reaffirm that the description we received, and this is really the, the conversation around this grant emerged out of our quality of life discussions specifically around bicycle lanes. So this has been a grant that the city administrator's been looking at and has now become available. So this is really, you know, we're having a conversation that has been, I think, made more fruitful by Judy's comments. Greg really is the, has been the person that has given us the kind of framework for this. It's been really helpful. So I'll just mention that the purpose of the, the action plan is really to, and I quote here, eliminating road, to really evaluate how to eliminate roadway fatalities and serious injuries. So, you know, it's a, it's a, it's to really get at these questions around where are there dangerous areas within the city, and what can, what can we then do? So that's just a little aside, I guess. But I wanted to just mention, the reason I pulled this in, in terms of our discussion, was to talk about the details of this grant, but then also, should we vote to move forward, the location where we would be taking the match from, the local match from. So the discussion that we had was to, the recommendation was that we would, this, this particular match would be funded from the street and sidewalks reserve. So I just wanted to point that out. But that's really the, the purpose of the discussion here. In addition to the substance of the grant, was really to talk about if we were to move forward, where would we, you know, extract the funding, funding from.
Yes, go ahead.
Ginny, could you tell us the balance in the streets and sidewalk, please?
Currently, we've got a uncommitted balance of about almost one point two million. The balance for the Lattice Highway, it went from one point eight million down to about six hundred and ninety-six thousand. So that's because of the additional grant that we received. So it, it has a healthy balance.
Okay, thank you so much.
So right now in cash, we have over one point nine million, but what I do is I take out the council commitments for projects.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on this? Yes, Mike?
Judy, one will be the smittle date and the award date.
I don't know the award date, they didn't know.
I see June, June twenty-sixth, I think, is where I saw.
That's the smittle date, is June twenty-sixth. The award date, they didn't know. They thought maybe this winter, this fall, but they didn't have a date.
Anything else, Mike? Pause that one? Okay. All right, let's call the law.
Councilmember Moser Kempoli?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh Russo?
Aye.
Councilmember La Prairie Shue?
Aye.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Forrester-Rothberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheson?
Yes.
All right. If the council would, I'd like to go back to the top of the programming here where we, Elaine, Cecilia, I'm so sorry, keep doing that. Cecilia had suggested that we talk about whether or not addresses for council members or city employees, city electants might be removed from various documents, digital and otherwise. And so I'm gonna let you guys just have that conversation and see where we go with that, if that's all right. Works, everybody? All right, Don, go ahead.
Are there laws, state laws or other laws, that say that we have to do this?
That you have to do what?
Have our addresses published, because I think the, the Board of Elections, it's always published, I believe, our addresses.
Again, the issue is under Freedom of Information law. The Freedom of Information law does not explicitly state language that, what Freedom of Information says is you have to have general information available. It is not, for example, for city employees, we have to have, you know, their salaries and their, and their job descriptions and their names. But they do not, they do not, under Freedom of Information, that's the, the individual residents are determined to be private information for city employees. I don't know that, that it has ever been requested, and I can certainly research it, but I, I think it's probably, I, I don't know. I don't know the answer. It may, it's, it, I'd have to see what other, see if there's an opinion from the Committee on Open Government or not. I think that the argument could certainly be made that under the circumstances of the type that, that we're, that we're talking about, that could be considered private information, whether in fact that has a practical impact or not. I, I can't answer that, but it's an interesting question.
I think my point was that, if I remember correctly, when someone runs for office, they have to have their address and it's public.
On the, on the application, you have to affirm that you're, that you're a resident or will be a resident at the time of you taking the oath of office and you decide to move forward. But that does not, that does not mandate that a personal address be a part of the public record.
Okay.
Again, you're, you're, it's like submitting a document to the government. You give them a document to the government, doesn't make it available to the entire world. So I, it's a, it's an interesting question. If we implemented it, I would certainly make a, make a request from the, from the Committee on Open Government and see if they've had issues that, that wasn't been addressed before.
Thank you. Cecilia?
I think the tradition, it's been a tradition to provide your address in order to symbolically and maybe in a concrete way even, demonstrate that you're a member of the community of which you represent. And so what I'm asking, and I think the conversation is having, being held, you know, in a lot of places right now, is whether or not you uncouple those. Whether or not you uncouple the tradition from the actual practical need to show that you live in the community that you represent.
Because, oh, sorry.
No, you're...
Because you physically couldn't take office.
Well, hang on, that was my fault, but let me go to Katie, and then I'll come back to you.
Unless, if, unless your thought was not complete.
What I was going to say is, can we poll the council and see if they object to having their address in public?
Sure we can.
Can I say my thing?
Yes, absolutely.
Shoot, I forgot it. That's ADHD for you, I'm sorry. The address, oh, you physically couldn't take office if you didn't resign within the war. Like, it's already been verified in the Board of Elections.
It's already there, exactly.
Also, it would be really easy to look up, like Tax Lookup or Oil, or, I mean, there are various ways that if someone were concerned for some reason, they could look it up without it being provided. It's, I mean, it's not on our business cards, it has city, city hall address. So, and I will say that, just publicly, I have a number, like a Google Voice number, that goes to my phone, so that if and when I leave office, my personal phone number hasn't been given out to, like, the whole community. So I think that this is sort of, I think it's a reasonable protection. But that being said, like, the whole point, I mean, I totally get the concern, and I think there's also a balance that, like, the idea is that you are a member of your community and a public-facing member of your community, and people know. I mean, I, I totally get the balance. So I mean, I just, that's what's going on kind of in my brain, is that maybe we don't need to provide that information, but then also, you know, you do want to not be a stranger, you know what I mean? So I'm, I'm not sure where I stand on it. I mean, it doesn't, I don't know that it bothers me one way or another. There's my poll answer.
Do I have anybody else jump into this discussion? Let me go to Elaine first, please.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say that, you know, personally, as somebody who has advocated, you know, for minority communities for a long time, it is definitely a safety concern for me. It's been a safety concern for me for a long time. I also use Google Voice, you know, for that reason too, to put a little extra protection, but I would definitely like us to consider, you know, moving forward with that.
Cecilia?
Yeah, so I just want to point out that I firmly believe that accessibility is the, you know, central feature of what we do and this position that we're in, and that phone numbers should be made accessible and email addresses should be made accessible to the public in terms of outreach and the reachability of elected officials. I think home addresses, our home address is very accessible to members of the public, and I really just, over the weekend, did a quick search and realized that they're extremely accessible to, to everybody. So which, in normal times perhaps, would be a welcome accessibility, a welcome part of this job? And, and there is certainly a part of me that wants my constituents to know where I live. The current moment doesn't seem to lend itself to that kind of more generous spirit. So that's why I brought this up as a, as a point to, for us to consider.
Yes.
If I can jump in here for a second?
Yes, Dick.
I've been doing some research online under public office law, section ninety, subdivision seven, says nothing to start show required a home address of an officer, of employee of any public agency. So if you're an officer, employee of a public agency, then there is no requirement that it be available in the form.
Cool.
Ginny?
I just want to emphasize a point that Katie brought up. The tax rule is available at the county level. It's also available on the website. It's also available on the city records. And if we have a resident come to our window and request to see the tax rule, we are mandated to let them review it. So I just want you to know that publicly, the tax rule information is accessible at various sites.
And voter, I think voter registration as well.
Right. Have anybody on this side of the, the, Don?
I, I think we should make it, if, if we have anything to say about this, that it's, if an elected official doesn't want their address available in the places that we control, I think you should be able to say that, "I don't want my address." And if it doesn't bother you, then it should be the usual procedure that we have now.
And it appears that at this step, there's no formal requirement that there be any action by the council, one way or the other, simply an expression. If you, if you wish to express it to the clerk's office, would be the obvious place. Because the clerk is the one who controls public information. In the city, it's you get to send them the way.
So given that, as I understand, if, if a council member or any elected member of the government, myself included, wanted to have my or their address removed from city digital or print, we could do that. And so there's the option for everybody? Yes?
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Yes.
It's about the business cards. It's a trap, it's always a trap. So, speaking of the city clerk being the holder of all the cards. My, so my Google Voice number, Carrie was very generous and printed out like a million labels at the beginning of my term and actually stickered them for me, which you did not have to do. To put my cell phone number on my card, and I'm just wondering, because I know that, like, they're updated with our names on them, is there any way to, like, add that information instead of the generic city hall number?
As in individual contactable numbers for you?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Rather than like the label? Because I mean, okay, because I think that would be good, just because, like, I, I want people to call me, you know? And if they call this, if they call city hall, and then it's like a phone tree, and they don't know how to get me, like, that could be kind of frustrating, so.
When you're out of cards, let me know what you want on it?
I will, thank you.
And we can update them.
Cool. Thank you so much.
All right, I think we have found ourselves resolution, which is great.
Thank you.
And I'm gonna move this now to additional business or council consideration, if there's anything that we've still got left in that. Ginny, you have something?
I just need to update the council on two items that we discussed last. Council meeting. Today, DOT was here to start the FTA audit for our federal budgets for our DOT transportation system. It went extremely well, and the deputy director was there, and he gave David a very high compliment. He said the first impressions were very good, and he was very impressed with how quickly you were able to provide answers and to provide information. And so it's, it's off to a very good start. FTA will be here at the end of July to inspect the transit public building itself. We did give them a tour of the transit building, and I have to give kudos to Gino. He was there, and he was very helpful answering all of the DOT personnel's questions, as was David. And so I just wanted to update the council on that visit. It was very successful. The cybersecurity audit from the State Controller's Office is going to start on June twenty-third. They are expecting the audit to be what they said months, so I don't know exactly how long it's going to end up taking, but they're, they're going to be looking at many different aspects and interviewing various city employees and looking at different policies and things like that. So we will keep you informed on that progress.
Great. Thank you, Ginny. Len?
Do we have an update on the Alvala Door stage? That's, I believe, the presentation or the opening ceremony is supposed to be this Saturday.
Yeah, yeah. Well, actually, you might be able to speak more eloquently than I in terms of the schedule.
I do not have an update.
You don't? Okay, well, then, here's what I know. Here's what I know. We're, we have a mini street closure tomorrow, correct? And the crane is coming in, hoisting things up, things are being assembled. It's not going to rain. We should be in good shape.
So they believe they're gonna have it completed for the Saturday's ceremony?
Yes, yes, they do, yeah. It winds up kind of a raptor setting once you get to a certain point. It winds up kind of a rector setting once you get to a certain point. It's going to be very cool. All right. So with that, I know that our city attorney would like to have us move to executive session for settle some litigation. So I'm going to ask everybody to have a wonderful evening and we'll see you next time. I'm sorry. My God, I've only been doing this for how many months?
Forty-two.
Elect forty-two. Not that we're counting. All right. I'd like to make a motion and do I have...
Who do you want in besides you? Just the council?
Yeah, just you and the council.
I need a second.
So who do we have? We have, we have...
Oh, yeah, I didn't want to volunteer for a second.
Elaine, follow.
Go ahead, Scott.
Okay.
In favor?
No action taken.
All in favor? Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.